I'll be pleased to call this meeting of the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals to order. We are in meeting room number four at the Carver Town Hall. It is August 23, 2022, and it's 7:02 PM. The first item on our agenda tonight, as is customary, is the approval of our meeting minutes from our most recent meeting of July 19, 2022. These minutes in draft form were circulated to all board members in advance of the meeting tonight so that they could be reviewed. I ask everybody if they have in fact received these draft minutes. They are five pages. I have five pages here in length. Has everybody received these?
Yes.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review them for any changes, amendments, or modifications that they might like to make? Do I hear any question or commentary with regard to these minutes? Do I hear a motion to accept these minutes then as written?
I'll make a motion to accept this written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So these meeting minutes are accepted. These are the meeting minutes of July 19, 2022. Next on our agenda is an important issue that I have raised, and that is discussion concerning board policy regarding submission of documents in advance of public hearings. Now, this issue has reared its not-so-happy head with this board on multiple occasions over the last two or three years, especially of those cases where we have some controversy or complexity, most recently with regard to alleged sandbiting incidents in Carver. And so, not wanting this board to be inundated with legal submissions on the day of the hearing, or even just a few minutes before the hearing, as has happened previously, I drafted this board policy. And for the record, what it says is that all petitioners who have written submissions in support of their application, that those written submissions must be filed with the planning department no later than six business days prior to a scheduled public hearing, absent compelling circumstances. Items not subject to this requirement are communications from a butters, updated map, septic plans, and copies of filed decisions of other town boards or committees. Failure to abide by this requirement may result in a postponement of the case or the exclusion from consideration by the board of said submissions. And then, responses or opposition. All written submissions of a non-applicant in response and/or in opposition to an application must be filed within three business days prior to a scheduled public hearing, absent compelling circumstances. Failure to abide by this requirement may result in a postponement of the case or the exclusion from consideration by the board of said submissions. Finally, all attorneys must copy each other on their submissions until later than three business days prior to a scheduled hearing, absent compelling circumstances. I take authorship of what I just read, and I think this will be helpful to the board members in their preparation for all these cases that come before us, especially the ones, as I said, that are controversial or complex, where there are often voluminous filings. And this board does take pride in reading through all of these submissions and considering them in due course. So, we don't want to be put in a situation, as we have been in the past, of trying to plow through legal documents and other documents and submissions that frequently can be very, very detailed. And I think all of us can remember incidents of cases where we've had stuff dumped on us literally at the last second, as the case is being called. So, I ask each individual board member now, at this point, if they have any questions or comments about this, whether they think it's a good idea or not such a good idea, do they want to make any changes? So I turn the meeting over to anyone who wants to speak on this. Good, bad, or indifferent?
Well, I'd just like to say that I agree, definitely need to put a policy in place when I cleaned out my folder tonight. For that case, there was this much paperwork in there. So, and as you said, a lot of it came very short notice the day of. So, I just wonder if the timeline's enough, especially...
You mean it should be more than six? Or six days? You think six days is not enough, or you mean like...
Six business days.
Okay. So, six business days before our meeting day. So if we had a meeting on a Tuesday, they would have to, everything would have to be submitted by the end of the day, the pre...
On Monday, previous Monday.
Previous Monday.
Right.
That's enough time.
That's the petitioner, and then three days before for any opposition? Mr. Barrington, any questions, comments?
No.
Mr. Poirier?
Good.
Ms. Cullen?
No, thank you.
What I propose, and what I will do if this board votes to accept this policy, is to instruct the planning department to add this written policy to the petitioner application package, which is handed out when new cases are filed, so that the petitioner is made aware immediately as to what their obligations are. Now, for the record, we don't have... I shouldn't say we don't have a lot of cases, but I would say the majority of cases that come before us are cases which are being presented by laypeople and not by legal counsel. And so, more often than not, we don't have this issue arise. It arises when legal counsel is representing and wants out of an abundance of caution and in an effort to properly represent their client, to present written arguments as well as oral arguments in favor, or in opposition if they're present for that purpose. So, I'm going to ask, as part of this policy, as part of this new list, that it be added to the application package, and also that any opposition received, that this be handed out to those in opposition of any application which is filed. Is that okay?
Yep.
So the people know straight away?
Yep.
So does anybody have a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept this policy to the zoning board as written.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And again, this will be handed out as part of the application package now. Okay. All right, so that takes care of that issue, which is letter B under our agenda for this evening. Next is public hearing case number, this is a continued public hearing, case number 100-6-0R, the petitioner being Wenham PV1 LLC, requesting dimensional variances pursuant to sections 2320 and 5222 of the Carver zoning bylaw for a property located in 27 Wenham Road in Carver. That's Assessor's Map 100, Lot 6, 0R, so as to construct a dual-use solar project in the residential agricultural district. Variances are being requested due to the irregular shape of the parcel, the need for frontage relief. The subject lot has 105 feet of frontage, the minimum requirement is 150. I do want the board to be aware that I am in receipt of a letter dated July 13 from David Burson Esquire, who is representing Wenham PV1 LLC. He writes as follows, "Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, on behalf of the above referenced applicant, we are respectfully requesting the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals to allow us to withdraw the above referenced application without prejudice. It is our understanding that a moratorium has been implemented by the town of Carver regarding solar photovoltaic projects, and we will make plans to resubmit our application once the moratorium is lifted." So, at this point, they're not going to be moving forward. My understanding is, is that the moratorium has to be, the moratorium that was voted on by town meeting has to be approved by the Attorney General's office, and that is still not been ruled on by the Attorney General. So, we're waiting for the AG to act. In the meantime, Mr. Burson is requesting withdrawal without prejudice. So I'll entertain a comment here.
Is that, so the moratorium, will it start, is it a year?
Yes.
So a year from when the AG finally approves it, or a year from when it was voted?
Don't know. Don't know. I think it's going to depend on what they have to say.
Because we're already about three months down the road here, a week since...
That's right. And of course, there is part of the moratorium, town meeting, also through the select board, is planning to have a solar bylaw committee and storage battery committee. We spoke about that. Ms. Mello has graciously agreed to be the zoning board representative on that subcommittee, Vice Chair Mello. So, it's a good question, Mr. Poirier. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's going to depend on what comes back from the AG's office. But in the meantime, for purposes of this case, which is before us now, does anyone else have any question or comment?
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we accept their offer to withdraw without prejudice.
Does everyone understand what our prejudice, what that means? It's that they can bring it back up without any wait period. Because we're here to vote it down, then I think they would, two years to reapply?
Yeah.
So, does anyone have a second to Mr. Poirier's motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So this case now is withdrawn without prejudice, and I will instruct the planning department to let Attorney Burson know that this request has been approved by the board this evening, August 23, 2022. Now, the next case is the Antoniotti case. I'm going to, with your patience please, go past this one for now. We're going to come back to it. I want to get to the next one, which is case 127-15-2, the petitioner being Brian J. Tamagini, right? Requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300, and section following of the Carver zoning bylaw, and/or variance for property located at 48 Deer Hill Lane, which is at Assessor's Map 127, Lot 15-2, so as to construct a 30-by-45-square-foot detached garage or workshop, that's 1,350 square feet. 700 square feet is allowed as of right, against the need for relief. All for the purpose of storing collector vehicles of the applicant in a residential agricultural district. So, Mr. Tamagini let the record reflect that this board conducted a site visit on July 30, 2022, at approximately 10 o'clock in the morning. Let the record also reflect that there were no donuts and coffee waiting for us. And so we are reconvening tonight, after having taken a view, to discuss what we're going to do with this. So, to recapitulate here, the construction, as we observed, is going to be located in the side and rear of the existing dwelling. It's only semi-visible from the street.
Yep.
It's 120 feet distant from the street, give or take a little, and about 10 feet below the street elevation.
Yep.
The proposed construction would be wired for interior electric service.
Correct.
But would not be plumbed or have any exterior lighting. No dimensional issues other than the size of the proposed construction. And you have argued to us that a single structure, even though it might be oversized, would be better than two garage-style structures on the property that would be allowed as of right under the bylaw. The proposed structure is about 18 and 1/2 feet in height.
Correct.
Existing house is 40 feet high, and about 2,436 square feet. You've begun to cut down some trees already, haven't you?
Correct.
And you have told us about 30 would need to be cut down.
It ended up being about 20.
Okay. And is the tree cutting complete now?
Correct.
I can verify that, because I actually didn't see it until a couple of weeks later. So, it's been cleared and staked and...
But even with the removal of those trees, you have argued to us that that side is still heavily treed, anyway.
Yes.
And our tree guy, Mr. Barrington, is concerned with trees, as you know.
I can't blame him on that one sometimes.
The proposed construction is a Morton-style building?
Correct.
Right? Would be one story only?
Yes.
And it would have three bay doors?
Correct.
All right, so all of that is factually accurate. Do you want to add anything more?
Not that I know of.
Did you give us a plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Ms. Mello, is Vice Chair for a reason?
That's the help.
Pass this down to Ms. Cullen so she can...
I've got one, if you want to pass this one down.
All right, gentlemen?
I can share.
So, yeah. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stop it here. Oh. Yeah. Okay. So is this a special permit, or is this a variance?
Variance.
Variance? I don't know.
You don't know?
Variance.
Why?
Well, that's what's checked off. I mean...
You guys...
I have no idea.
You take out your... Dimensional relief.
You're looking for a variance to the dimensional requirement as specified under 2245(c). But if we're doing a variance, we have to do what's called a chapter 48 analysis, okay? And what that 48 refers to is a chapter in the Massachusetts general laws that says that there has to be something unusual about your property that would allow us to grant you the variance from 2245(c). It's got to be something related to soil, shape of the lot, or topography. So, make the argument.
The shape of the lot is an odd shape, but there's a pay, pay shape of the lot. And so I'm not able to put it straight down the driveway if I, like I originally wanted to do.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so you made a shape argument, topography?
It's 12, approximately 10 feet below, so it won't really be seen by anyone passing by.
Yeah, but that's not really an appropriate argument to make for topography. That there is something, to put it another way, that there's something limiting about your property that requires that it be put where it's going to be put.
The septic is in front of, you build, in front of the front of the lot, so I can't put the building at the front of the lot.
So there's a soil issue? The septic is where in the front, right? Okay. Looking at the map, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Poirier, do you have anything?
Well, I'm looking.
Mr. Barrington? Ms. Cullen? Ms. Vice Chair?
No, other than the fact that we've done several of these.
Yes, definitely have. This going to give you enough room? When are you going to start?
As soon as possible.
What's that mean?
It's in the hands of, will be in the hands of Morton. I don't know what the schedule is. Last I worked was November, but they said if I got approval of everything earlier and they had a cancellation, that they could, that they would squeeze me in.
Do you have anything further to add?
Not that I know of. I mean, it's fairly straightforward, I think. It's, I mean, you guys saw the lot, it's, you know where it's going to be and everything, so...
And your argument is that based on its shape and its soil...
Yep.
It needs to be placed where it is, there's really...
There's no place other than, you can't put anywhere up front or any of that, so...
Plus, there's a large hill, which would be part of the topography.
Well, you couldn't place it in the front, that's for sure.
Right. Well, you can't according to our bylaws.
What about...
In front of a building.
Well, you can't have a garage in front of a house. You're not supposed to.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that has anything to do with topography in this instance. What we've got is a shape and a soil issue.
Yep.
That give us cover to go ahead and break the local bylaw.
Okay.
In your favor, if that's what you want us to do.
Yep. Affirmative, yeah.
So, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we're going to go on now to our findings. If I can find my notes. Which I've got. They don't ever appear at one point. I suggest that the board adopt the following finding, that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, and/or topography of the structures or lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner. Relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Got it?
Yep.
Folks, somebody want to make a motion to adopt that finding?
I'll make that motion to adopt that finding.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I suggest the board render the following decision. A variance under Massachusetts general laws, chapter 48, section 10, for dimensional variance of 650 square feet is granted from the Carver zoning bylaw, section 2245(c). Again, owing to soil shape and/or topography. The 650 square feet that I referenced is the difference between what you're allowed as of right and what you're asking to be put in.
Yep.
Okay. So, I ask the board if they understand what I just read, or do I need to read it again?
We're good.
Okay, does somebody want to make that motion?
Before we make that motion...
Go ahead.
Jim pointed out, 700 square feet is what's allowed by right.
Yes.
And this is...
1,350. So he needs 650.
Okay, sorry, that was my misunderstanding.
Sorry.
Does anybody want to make a motion to adopt that decision?
I'll make that motion to adopt that decision.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. So, we have made the appropriate finding, we've made the appropriate decision, but we still have something to do.
Conditions?
Yes. Mr. Poirier has a mind like a steel truck.
Steel sieve.
So, you have given us a plan. Can someone show me that plan again?
It's down there.
Okay, the plan, wait, I just need to see. This plan prepared by GAF Engineering, Inc., for 48 Deer Hill Lane, and it's dated, where's the date on this thing? Thank you. June 1, 2022. It's hereby incorporated and made part of this decision. Okay? This plan is being incorporated by law. So when you go to the planning department to get your building permit, you want to make sure that what you're giving them is this plan and not something different.
Okay.
And I'll talk to the board in a minute about something that has happened recently, where we approved something which required zoning relief based upon the plan as submitted. And then when they went to get their building permit, they submitted a different plan.
Yep.
That's a no-no.
Yeah, to try to see something.
You can't do that, right? So, this is all subject to the plan of record. Do I hear a motion to accept that condition?
I'll make a motion to accept the condition.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, there are a couple of other conditions that we should put in based on what we discussed at the beginning, which is you're not going to have plumbing, right?
No.
And you're not going to have exterior lighting.
No.
And...
It's single floor.
And one floor.
Yep.
Right?
Correct.
And what else did we have?
I think that was it. Do you want to put a height restriction on it?
A height restriction? I don't think we need to do that, because it's going to be based on...
Yeah.
So I think it's going to be one story only.
Correct.
No plumbing?
No. Well, the only plumbing will be heat, if you want to consider that plumbing, but it's going to be, you'll be...
No interior running water.
There'll be no running water or bathroom or anything like that.
All right. And no exterior lighting?
No.
Those would be the other three conditions besides the plan.
Okay.
Anybody have any comments about that?
No.
No.
Somebody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Those three conditions. Lighting, no lighting, no exterior lighting. It's only one floor and no running water. That's the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're done with you. Where are those donuts?
Drop them off.
Actually, it's time for pizza now.
Before he leaves, Sharon usually goes.
Yeah, Sharon usually does. That's now your job.
I don't know, she was fucked away without parking. So...
Any person aggrieved by this decision may appeal to a court of appropriate jurisdiction in this state. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter 48, section 17. And they have within 20 days of the date that this decision is filed in the office that's had a clerk to do so. I write all these decisions and I'm pretty fast, because if I don't do them fast, I forget what I've done the night before, two times before. So, you're not going to be able to do anything for at least 20 days from the date that this gets filed there anyway, so... That was the reason I was asking you how quickly you wanted to get started, because if they call you and say, "Okay, we got an opening, let's go",
Yeah.
you're not going to be able to do it.
Okay.
Until this time period has passed. And I can't waive it, it's statutory.
Yep, well, that's...
You know, you're a nice guy, but you chintzy with the donuts. I can't waive it.
Price of coffee donuts too much.
Does he bring the decision down to the court? I, this part I know. I didn't know the timeframe.
We're breaking in, Ms. Bell. Go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Once your waiting period has passed, you go up to town hall, you get your permit.
Okay.
You take everything down to the registry of deeds, you have to have it recorded, they will give you that information back.
Okay.
Back to the town hall.
Okay.
And that's how you will get your building permit.
Okay.
All right, so you've got to go through the waiting period.
Yeah.
Then pick up the information here.
Yeah.
Go down to the registry of deeds, come back.
Okay.
And then he'll get your permit. How was that?
That's pretty good, you see, she's, she's stirred. Pay attention to what she's saying. Okay. Thank you, Brian.
That's it?
You're done with us, unless you just want to hang up.
Hey, get home cooked dinner.
There you go.
Hang on.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a brief suspension, five minutes, thank you.
Side by side?
Back in session. That suspension was for me, because my voice is thin tonight, coming back from some stuff. So, although I'm not completely lubricated because of the lack of water in this town hall, I'll try to soldier through. This next case, and the last one on our agenda for this evening, is case number 1-20-0R, the petition of being of Richard Antoniotti II and Thomas C. Bennett trustees, requesting a special permit and or variances in accordance with sections 2245, 2254, 2260, and sections following, 5221, 5222, and 5300, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 92B South Main Street in Carver, which is at a census map 1, lot 20-0-R, so as to demolish two existing cottages and construct a new 30 by 40 square foot, which is 1,200 square feet, house with an attached accessory drilling unit in a residential agricultural district. Now, the procedure, the procedural beandere into this case should be mentioned at this point for the record. This is actually a revised, a new and revised petition. A, this new petition, as I just read it to the record, was filed and dated May 16, 2022. The plans for this particular property were different based upon an earlier finding or an earlier application, which has been withdrawn. So this is a first hearing, and we haven't opened it quite yet, but this would be a first hearing on this new application. And it's the second, did we open the first one?
July 12, Mr. Chairman. Bet you had a full board, you had a six...
Full board, but I don't know if we reopened it. I think we just talked about whether you wanted a full board present or not, am I right?
That may have been an earlier hearing, I think we, I was actually asking Rick when we were here earlier, I think in June we came.
Yeah.
And you indicated, and we got continued, I can't recall why, and I don't think you opened it then, but I, we did have...
It was in, on June 22. You appeared before the board, asked for continuance, only four board members were present.
That was it, yeah, right.
And then on July 12, you did come back and you talked about the change, the different application, the new application.
Yeah.
So it appears, you're right, that we did open on that date, which now presents a potential problem. Because, Ms. Cullen, were you here on, you were here?
Yeah.
She was.
So I don't, no, I guess we don't have that problem. It seems as if we have a full board.
We had all six, fortunately, on the 22th.
So I think we're good, Mr. Antoniotti.
It's been a long, thank you.
It's been a long meandering trail on this case, and what is now before us is quite different than what your original plan was. But the record also reflects that we conducted a site visit at the property on July 30, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. Beautiful day.
Sorry, both are coffee.
No, I was just going to say. I don't know, maybe...
It was a nice walk.
It was a nice walk, yes, I, Jennifer and I walked down this long road and enjoyed our, our constitutional. And it's certainly a beautiful property once you get back in there. Now, check my notes. You have told us that you purchased the property roughly five years ago?
Yes.
True? That you've been paying taxes on?
Yes.
As part of the proposed construction, a pre-existing brick patio is going to be removed.
Correct.
As well as two sheds, dilapidated sheds that are located at the site, is that true? And the house to be built is going to be three stories?
Yes.
And the attached accessory unit would be two stories?
Correct.
The first floor of which would be a one-car garage.
Yes.
Square footage of the accessory would be roughly 780 square feet.
Correct.
Which would be allowed as of right under the bylaw. Don't need any relief there. The square footage of the proposed house would be approximately 3,600 square feet based upon what you told us at the time.
Can we back up for a second?
Yes.
Well, you say the garage is 780?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
The garage is on the first floor of the accessory, which would be two floors. So it's garage and then the floor above. Is that right, Mr. Antoniotti?
Yes.
And what's the dimensions of the garage part itself?
Well, the accessory in total is 700 square feet, 780 square feet. Do we have a square footage for the garage?
Approximately half of that would be the garage.
Yeah, makes sense.
Oh, okay.
I got it.
You got it?
I'm good.
Yep.
Square footage of the proposed house, not the accessory now, but the proposed house, which is three stories, would be 3,600 square feet. At least, that's what you told us at the time. And there's going to be four bedrooms in total, is that true, Mr. Antoniotti?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have now provided us with a plan, thank you for this, because we didn't have anything by which to go during our earlier meeting. And I asked either one of you, counsel or Mr. Antoniotti, to discuss this plan with us, which is new evidence in the case.
What would you like to know?
Better put is, what would you like us to know?
Well, I, I think I'm happy to kind of walk you through it, so...
Go ahead, walk us through it.
Yeah, so, you know, what you have here, I think, you know, maybe we can look math and approach it. If you look, maybe we'll flip one of these to the second page, so you can see the elevation here. This is going to be the view from the pond, which I think is of interest, probably of most interest to the community at large. One of the lot is actually Mr. Antoniotti's sister. The other brother is a cranberry bog with no structure within sight anywhere near the house, really. So, you know, to the extent that anyone's concerned about aesthetics, I think this is probably most significant. So this is the view, the rear elevation, which is pond facing, and then you can see the sloped roof. Again, this would be the rear of the cottage, that would be, this is the shared entrance, the in-law is on this side. The house is on this side. This is the garage area, this is the living area, the 780 square, 780 square feet of living area for the in-law. And then we have the house here, which of course is three bedrooms, no, no basement.
This is the, this will pop out as the connection?
No, sir, this is the, that's the shared entrance, and then you go this way to the in-law and this way to the house.
Got you.
Yeah. And this is facing the lake, as you can see, you know, they've kind of taken a bit away from the living space to create a balcony on the top level there. So again, I think in a nutshell, you can see the floor plans, which I don't think are of as much interest as the elevations, but again, you know, we've got four bedrooms, which was the same bedroom count that exists currently. Right now, there's two cottages, which are standalone dwellings. We're going to have, you know, two bedrooms each, we're going to have, you know, four bedrooms in the new structure. And again, it's going to be an in-law with the primary structure. Just to rehash some of the other points that aren't related to the plan, you know, we are improving setbacks, I think most significantly from the pond, substantially. We're moving back from 12 and a half feet to 36 and a half feet from the pond, so I think that's a huge betterment. There's a large brick patio button directly adjacent to the pond right now, it's being removed, which I think has environmental benefit, and again, I think having a functional septic, compliant Title V system is going to be a vast improvement. I know the Conservation Commission shared that belief, they're not the board of health, but they were pleased by that.
Are there plans for the garage?
Yeah, they're right here.
Yeah, it's, uh... Yeah, garage and storage.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, okay.
Yeah. That top corner, yeah, the second. This is the first floor, so this is the garage and storage area, and this is the second, I'm sorry, this is the house. And that is, this is the second wall, that second floor has the bedroom for the in-law.
So this is about the garage?
Yep, exactly. So again, you know, and so we're moving two dilapidated sheds and the brick patio. You know, replacing two standalone dwellings, two cottages with a single dwelling with an accessory unit, that again, we're not seeking relief for, but that's why we're here. Effectively, the relief we're seeking is a determination that this plan is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structures. That's why we're here, and again, I think it's a huge improvement, I hope you share that opinion. And again, I think that's, you know, four bedrooms, and you can see the layout, I think it speaks for itself to a large degree, but certainly happy to feel any questions.
And the garage is separate from the other structure, yes?
No, no, it's all one, yep, it's all, so this is all one connected unit.
So that's the reason why, because it's attached, the 700 square foot requirement is out of this set?
No, I think so, you would enter here, right? So this is the first ground floor, you'd enter here, and then you can come into the garage here. And the house here, and then there's 780 square feet of living area on the second level of the in-law, which is below the 800 foot maximum for the, for accessory.
Originally, there's going to be a breezeway, 35.
Correct, a shared entryway.
Right.
Is 840.
So... Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair question, actually, it was my late person's knee jerk, and then I looked kind of closely at the bylaw, and actually, because an architect raised it to me, it's the gross floor or living area shall not exceed 800 square feet. And, you know, a stairwell does not count, so that's how we get under to 780 as opposed to what you calculated at the 840, the 840 is the exterior of the structure, but that's not the way you calculate floor area for purposes of a, of the bylaw.
You don't care, you don't care. No, okay, so I'm still, I'm still not getting this, so let me just, let me back out again.
Keep going.
Right, let him finish, I'll let you finish.
No, I was just answering, go ahead.
No, what, you're all set? No, if you got, let you finish, then I'll ask my question, just because I want to make sure I got it straight.
Oh, yeah, so, so I guess my response to, I think my response to your question was that, you know, when you, when you calculate the 800 allowed square feet for an accessory in-law, the gross living area shall not exceed 800 feet, and that's what we're working with here, as opposed to the exterior dimensions of the structure.
Okay, so I'm, I guess, and I guess my question is, the bottom part of this is a garage, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Which is, which is more than 700 square feet?
Well, then you don't count the garage, but I do think you would count the bath and the washer and dryer, which is now going to put you over 800 square feet, because you said the washer and dryer and the bath and the closet are, are for the accessory. And I know previously, like, we have an accessory next door to us. They were allowed to finish, they were on a fall basement. They were allowed to finish their 800 square feet where they lived.
Yeah.
They were not allowed to finish their basement.
Well, you know, I mean, again, I, I think that, you know, our view is that your living area is this area.
But that's not the view of the town.
That's not what?
That's not the view of the town.
Which town?
Our town. 800 square feet is the unit that is finished.
Right.
And this washer, dryer and half-bath downstairs is finished. You've got a closet.
Downstairs meaning in the garage?
Yes. But if you see on the plans here, the other living unit already has a washer, dryer and a fall bath. So the washer, dryer for the first floor belongs to the in-law.
And how many square feet is that?
Well, it's not, it's, if you cut it in half, it's 30, so it's 15. And again, we'll say, you said 760, and this is all right.
780.
No, he said on the, on the, upstairs is 760. 780.
780, yeah.
780. All right, so you got 15.
So if you count that additional space downstairs, how much is that?
14, that's an additional 210.
If I put the washer and dryer upstairs and eliminate the bathroom downstairs, would that make things proper?
But you can't finish that space. You can use it for storage.
Correct.
Yeah, you can use it for storage, but you can't finish it. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't add another half-bath upstairs, you'd eliminate that half-bath downstairs.
I just move the washer and dryer and eliminate the half-bath downstairs.
And probably, well...
And I mean, you know, I mean, washer, dryer is an appliance, right? So it's really just a, this is just a, an area, right? It's, it's not...
But it's attached to the, it's attached to the living space for the in-law.
Right.
It's like the cellar of the in-law.
So we're talking about the space for the washer, dryer and the half-bath downstairs?
And the closet.
And the closet, now needing to be counted towards this total square footage, which if you want to keep that in, is going to require additional zoning relief.
So why don't we eliminate those from the first floor?
And what's going to go in there, just space for storage?
Correct.
Okay. And you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Poyer?
All right.
I'll take it, I'll sit next to him. Mr. Barrington? I guess they're...
Tell you another?
No, sorry. You have another issue?
I'm sorry.
Good, good. Ms. Bell?
The deck.
Tell us about the deck.
So when you look at all of, and not the square footage for the in-law, but when you look at relief, the deck has to be counted as part of the relief.
I'm sorry, which category of relief?
So that this decking area, when you're looking, it's saying 30 feet, but it really is 30 feet plus the deck.
Right, but again, we're talking about living area, and I don't think it's deck.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about square footage for the in-law, I'm talking about relief from the side lot lines, which is part of the entire application.
So may I interject?
Yeah.
Of course.
When I originally approached my architect, he said he'd have these for me two weeks ago so that I could review them.
Yeah.
He dropped them off to me yesterday.
Of course.
I dropped them off here this morning, and I noticed there were some things that... So as an example, that deck is can't relieve it, so I sent him a picture a couple of months ago, hey, look at this, what do you think? Hey, look at this, what do you think? Because I know you can't put posts in the decks, because that would increase the footprint. So I said, I go, I'll talk to the building inspector when I get down to that point.
Okay.
So unfortunately, he put it on the plan. It wasn't something that I intended on doing. I was going to talk to the building inspector, but I, like you said, if the building inspector said, no, you can't, that can't relieve the decks, because it's going to approach on your setbacks, then I would say, okay, so be it. So unfortunately, he put it on there.
Right.
So that, that is not, you can eliminate that from the, or you can put it on the provisions at the end, if you like.
Okay.
There will be no decks extending over the second floor.
Okay, okay. So that deck's coming off?
Correct.
Okay. That just makes it easier, because it doesn't say how wide it is, how much, yeah.
Like I said, I didn't have time to review it, and I didn't want to have to reschedule anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I figured I'd address it while I was here. Do you ever bring your own pen?
You know it's here somewhere.
What does it mean?
Nothing. No, 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 I'm just kidding. I know it's here somewhere.
The pencil, I got one.
Take that, use the pen. It looks better. I'll use the pencil. All right, so, to go back a little bit.
Yes.
This construction, should we allow it to occur, is going to improve existing setbacks?
Yes, sir. Most substantially.
The rear of the existing house is now going to be roughly 12.6 feet from the water?
No, sir, it is 12.6. We're moving to 36 and a half.
You're moving from 12.6 to 36.5 feet from the water. I meant to say that, I'm sorry. The westerly side of the existing house is now 23.6 feet from the sideline. The proposed construction is going to be a little bit further away, 24.1 feet from the sideline. That's on the westerly side. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Just agreeing with it?
Yeah.
Within inches, I would agree with you.
The eastly side of the existing house is now about 20.3 feet from the sideline. The proposed construction is going to be 20.8 feet from the sideline. Is that right?
According to my engineering, yes.
And the current cesspool, which is located about 15 feet from the water, is going to be replaced with a new compliance system, yes?
At the rear end of the building.
And about 170 feet from the water, right?
Correct.
And we've overcome the issue with the deck, which is no longer to be part of this plan. And we've overcome the issue with the washer, dryer, closet, half-bath, no longer going to be placed on the first floor of the accessory.
Correct.
So we don't have to worry about increases to square footage, additional dimensional relief, all that stuff now relating to the deck and the half-bath and the closet, washer, dryer is spot the table.
Correct.
Not me. All right. Does anybody else have any questions about this?
No.
You going to be living there?
Yes, sir.
Who's going to be living in the accessory, if I may be so bold to ask?
My parents are 82, and then when they go to heaven, I have a brother and sister who are both in their late 50s, and they're going to fight over it.
Two twin beds.
Mug beds.
Mug beds.
I guess my major, if you want to call it an issue or question that I had when I went out there to look at it, wasn't so much your good faith attempts to move away from the water and improve the septic, which I all, you know, I recognize all of that. And those are all positives, for sure. But the height of this house, and the, the house that faces the water with all those windows, and whether it's going to be in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. Talk to me about that.
My intention, when it's getting moved back 35 feet, and I'm going to make it dark colors, so from the pond, you probably won't even see it. I'm going with probably black trim, like the gentleman did two houses down from me. And I'm going to probably go with dark shingles, so it does not stand out. I don't want people to know I'm actually there.
And what did you say, 35 feet?
Or whatever the...
It's 34 and a half, I think.
36 and 36.5.
So my intention is not to stand out at all.
This says 34.7.
So help me with this, counsel. I had written down 36.5 feet from the water.
Oh, I thought you said the height of the building.
That's the set, um, let's see. The rear of the existing house is now 12.6 feet from the water. The proposed construction is going to be 36.5 feet.
Correct.
So, Ms. Mello, you have...
I thought you asked for the height of the building.
No.
Sorry.
I've moved on.
Sorry. It's been a long day.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Ms. Cullen, we haven't heard too much from you tonight. What would you like to ask?
I don't have any questions.
As far as the height of the building, I just want to make note, I was very concerned about the height of the building also. Our bylaw was 38. Three stories, I thought, on the pond would be a lot. But if you, when we went there and you looked across the pond, right across the way...
There's another tall one over there.
There was another tall one, which made me feel better.
Well, you know, we must make the price share feel better at every opportunity.
No, but I mean, it's not going to...
Three stories, two.
Yeah. I mean, it's in keeping with what is already there.
Well, and the reality is, people who have a place on the water are going to want to take advantage of that, whereas they might not necessarily, unless it's in a mountain, so I'm not surprised. So the height on this plan of the house is?
34 feet, seven inches.
Feet.
34 feet, seven inches.
The height of the house is only 34.7 inches?
No, that's not what she said. Listen to her.
34.
Feet, seven inches.
Seven inches.
We're going to get along.
Definitely needed some water.
Oxygen deprivation going on over here. So, does anyone else have any questions?
So I guess, I guess my question would be, so we've made some, sort of agreed on some modifications to these plans, right? So assuming that what happens here in terms of conditions, does this thing have to be tweaked in some way before it can be...
Yeah, I mean, when you go for your building permit, you're going to have to bring revised plans.
Correct.
Right? So if we agree to grant the relief as requested, we'll condition it on the deck being eliminated, and on the first floor of the accessory, the closet, the washer, dryer, and the half-bath being eliminated, that those plans have to be filed before the building permit can be issued and the construction commences.
I guess the other question I would have, it looks like that other side now is going to be storage, so, I mean, it has to stay storage, right? It can't be, it can't be another bay for...
No living space there.
Well, no, a bay for parking another car.
No, there'll be a wall in between.
Okay. This is a one-car garage.
Well, right, but with that out of there, it could be a two-car garage, that, I guess that was, if that's something that you want mentioned in the conditions, we can certainly...
I have no basement, so my girlfriend wants storage.
She's got, now she's got a lot.
It doesn't look like she has an attic either.
No.
Right.
I was a little concerned with the third story also, as aesthetically, how that would look. But I like the plan with, with the roof line going up, so as you're coming in on that side, it's, I think that looks good.
Yeah.
I think that was an improvement, wasn't what I thought it was going to be. But I, I liked the way it came out.
And depending on how the sun is, I'm going to see if I can actually put solar panels on it, so it's going to be that way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay. And I think you've confirmed for me all of the other pertinent dimensions and specifics here. Is there anything else that you want us to know?
Not that I am aware of.
Counsel?
Uh, yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Nothing? Do I hear a motion?
To close the hearing.
So moved. Figure second. Long paper.
Aye.
Okay. So, is this a variance or a special permit, counsel?
It's a special permit.
And accordingly, we will apply the, the special permit condition, so that we can move this case forward.
Can we also make note that, in keeping with our previous decisions, this will be hitting the footprint of the original?
Yes, we can certainly make that as part of the conditions. And I think that you have endeavored to do that. Is that true, that part of the new construction is going to be within the existing footprint of the old construction?
A piece of it.
Yes.
Not entirely contiguous, but part?
Correct.
Okay. So I propose that the board make the following finding, that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh the detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Anybody want to make that?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion to adopt that finding?
I'll make the motion to adopt the finding.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I also propose the following finding, that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structure in the neighborhood. Anybody want to adopt that finding?
Can you please repeat that?
Yes, the board finds that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than any existing non-conforming structure in the neighborhood.
May I, Mr. Grant?
You may.
Yeah, I think what you, if you want, you're trying to follow the wording of the bylaw, I want to say, not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure, not any non-structure in the neighborhood. So you're talking about detriment to the neighborhood, not, you know, any structure in the neighborhood.
You're proposing that we eliminate the word "any"?
It's, it's a motion.
More detrimental than the existing non-conforming structures in the neighborhood?
To the, yeah, I think that's fine. What you had just, the wording of your finding was that it's not substantially more...
More detrimental.
Than any existing structure in the neighborhood, was what you had said.
All right. So not substantially more detrimental than the existing structures in the neighborhood? Existing non-conforming structures in the neighborhood. Is that more...
I think to the neighborhood, you know, detriment to the neighborhood is the construction.
To the neighborhood, okay.
I think he's just trying to earn his fee.
I'll make that motion.
We have, we have changed "any" to "the" and "in" to "to." And as counsel all knows, even a simple word can be important.
Yeah.
So, I'll repeat that. The board finds that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structures to the neighborhood. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So these findings now have been adopted. And I suggest the following language for our decision. A special permit is granted under Article V, Section 5330. Again, as the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on a town and a neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. Basically, a regurgitation of our first finding with special reference now to Article V, Section 30, 5330. Anybody want to make that motion to adopt that? I'll make a motion to adopt that. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. That's taken care of. And also, pursuant to Section 2253 of the Carver zoning bylaws, the proposed construction is determined not to be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structures to the neighborhood. I think that's the language which tracks the language that we just voted on the, on the findings. Again, with special reference now to Section 2253.
I'll make that finding.
Okay. That decision?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second? Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, so we're done with that. Now we're going to do conditions, and we have a number of these, the first one of which is that this decision will be subject to revised plans that will need to be filed by the petitioner or applicant before the construction is to commence, before the building permit is issued and before construction is to commence, with special reference to elimination of the deck, as it appears on the current version of the plans.
The left, left elevation deck.
The left elevation deck. And also, subject to elimination of the closet, washer, dryer, and half-bath on the first floor of the accessory. That's all going out. So again, our decision is conditioned on the filing of revised plans, revised in those two, in those two ways.
Agreed.
Okay.
And then, what about the siding of the...
The what?
That, to make sure that he...
You think part of the footprint, is that what you're saying?
No.
No?
That it's not shifted one way or the other too much. So don't we have a certain sideline and sideline on left and right?
Well, he has... Go ahead. What are you on, say?
I was going to say, I think the site plan shows where it's going to be.
Yeah.
Okay, well, but this site plan that was given to us was for a different proposed house?
Yeah, fair enough.
So that's, I don't know if you can use this for the house that is being presented tonight. So on here, it says 24 and 20. Is that going to be exactly what it is?
I do believe, yes.
Okay, because it is the same, so the house that you're presenting tonight is 30 feet wide, but there's been significant change.
So it's still 30 feet wide, but we've eliminated the entryway, and then the engineer's going to stake it out so that we get these, get these are the dimensions we're talking about.
The, yes, those are the dimensions that I'm talking about.
So he'll stake those out.
And he will make sure the build is within?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's...
So how would you like to have this read in the decision?
Um, I'd like it to read that the constructed house will follow the proposed site plan for side relief, based upon the proposed site plan that was submitted on April 24, 2022. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The date is April 21st. Yes, we submitted it in May, yeah.
April 24th or 21st?
April 24th, 2022.
And that's the site plan.
Just to make sure that those, you know, you...
And I'm sorry, may I interject again?
Go ahead.
I don't, certainly don't mean to micromanage the board, but you hit specified in Section 2253 in your second element of your motion.
2254.
Yeah, residential structures, and that's what the inspectional service has specified, so I think that's just residential as opposed to structures.
Quick look. Yeah, I got it all. It's very well amended. Yeah, and I'm gonna go back to what you just said.
Yep.
This is structures and this is residential structures, so I think that's why the building inspector cited 2254.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's go back and do, first things first, let's amend the vote that we just made referencing Section 2253, it should have been Section 2254. Per that section, we determined that the proposed construction is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure, or structures to the neighborhood, okay? So we're amending 2253 to 2254. You're a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for that amendment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's cleaned up. Can we go back to what you were just talking about?
Okay.
You want a condition?
I want a condition.
That the new house will follow...
The site plan.
Mm-hmm, of 4/24/22.
Of 4/24/22.
With a location, the location of the house, is that what you mean to say?
The location of the house, yep.
And we're talking the house, not the accessory?
Well, the accessory is part of the house.
That's right.
It's all within the same thing.
Okay.
So it's gonna be thirty-six and a half feet back from the pond, it's gonna have a twenty-four point one side setback, uh, side lock setback.
Twenty-four point one, right.
And twenty point eight.
And twenty point eight, right, I have all of that.
Okay, yep, so I just wanna, that's...
Thirty-six and a half feet from the water. So, I got it.
Okay.
Location of the house will follow the site plan of 4/24/22.
Yep.
This is what happens when we have all these plans and there's still sort of a moving target here. Okay, so, did we do a vote on making the decision, subject to the plans of record, with specific reference to the need to eliminate the left elevation deck and the...
Yeah, I think we voted that one already.
Did we vote that one already?
We did.
Okay. So now, we're also saying that the location of the house, or the siding of the house, will follow the site plan, which is also incorporated in the record of this case, that site plan dated 4/24/22.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. What other conditions do people want? I think those are the two big ones, the siding of the plan, and then revising the, the plans that have been given to us tonight before you go to the building inspector for your permit, because he's gonna have to see that the deck's been eliminated and the half-bath is gone too. All right, what else do we have here that we think we should, the height of the house will not be greater than thirty-four feet, seven inches?
Should we make it thirty-five feet, just in case?
We can do that. I'm sure Mr. Antoni...
It just can't go higher than thirty-eight.
Height of house will be limited to thirty-five feet, not greater than thirty-five feet?
Yep.
Is that okay? Okay, that's the third one, third condition.
So moved.
Yeah, we're gonna do these.
Oh, we're gonna do them all together?
Yeah, we'll do them.
All right.
What else do people wanna see? Ms. Mellow, you're, you're good with this stuff?
Yeah.
Tell me what you'd like to see. Anything further?
I like the plan.
You like the plan?
I do.
The only thing I didn't like about it is there's no view for your parents.
They don't like it, yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
They don't, they don't, do they watch the reruns of this year? Oh, and when we talk about siding the house, at least, we have to make reference to the fact, and I'm not sure this needs to be in the conditions, it'll probably be in the body of the decision, that at least part of it will be sided within the existing footprint. Or does somebody wanna make that part of the conditions?
I, because that's the precedent we've used, I really think it should be part of the condition.
Okay, so there's another one.
You can't really avoid it with the setbacks we have, I don't think.
It would be very difficult.
Yeah, yeah. Well, in, with the site plan, it's gonna be there, 'cause that thirty-six and a half, it's gonna hit the current footprint.
So can you list those again, please? Yes, and when I'm done, going through what I think we should consider. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to see as a condition? One-car garage only, storage stays as designated?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Is that another one?
Yes.
So that's five that I have so far. Does anybody have anything else that they wanna see as a condition? Because after we're done, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mellow to recapitulate.
The five conditions?
Ms. Cullen, would you like to see anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Barrington? All set? Ms. Mellow?
I'm good.
Good, okay, so the five conditions. That this decision is conditioned upon the filing of revised building plans, eliminating the left elevation deck, and also the half-bath, washer dryer, and closet on the first floor of the accessory, that's the first one. The second one is that, on the first floor of the accessory, this will be a one-car garage only, and the storage as designated will remain storage and not be used as another port to put a car in, right? Everybody good so far?
Yeah.
That the siding of the proposed construction will be at least in part within the existing footprint.
Correct.
Okay? The height of the proposed construction will be not greater than thirty-five feet.
Correct.
And there was one other one that was important, and Ms. Cullen can tell me what that is.
The siding of the house would be pertinent to the plan of April 24th?
Yes, thank you.
2022.
Siding of the house as represented on site plan. Of April, what?
24th.
2022.
Yep.
Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Comment?
Uh, no, I think you did a nice job, and I approve it.
Do we have to vote on the condition?
Yes, yeah. Why, you got something else?
No, I just want, wanna cross the Ts.
We're about to do that.
Okay.
Does anybody have any final question, comment on any of these five conditions? Everybody understand what we're doing and why we're doing it? This has been a little bit more complicated than we would normally get, not because of the nature of the plan here, at least for me, but because these things are not...
Precedent.
Well, not so much precedent, but these plans are not gonna be your final plans.
Correct.
Right? So, the eagle-eyed Ms. Mellow has got some things, and Mr. Poirier, and I think we've now gotten us to the point where we don't have to hold you up.
Right.
Here, at this level, you're just gonna have to get these plans in final draft form to present to the planning department. Right?
Yes. Plan or building, do you have to go back to plan?
Go to planning or building?
I don't know.
You'll figure it out, maybe down there. Okay. These five conditions as stated, all in favor?
Aye.
Did we do a first and a second?
No.
Okay, Ms. Mellow, do you wanna make a, a motion to adopt these five conditions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the five conditions as stated.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're done.
You're an honest man, right?
Yes.
So how soon you gonna start?
I guess I have to wait twenty...
Right, yes.
Get ready. That's right. Gotta do it one more time.
I gotta read this in the record. Any person agreed by this decision can be appealed to a court of competent jurisdiction pursuant to Massachusetts General Act 48, Section 17, within twenty days of the date of this decision, okay? And Ms. Mellow has the rest.
So then, you come to the town hall, you get all your paperwork together, you go down to the courthouse, you put it on file, register it with the registry of deed, then bring everything back here, so that you can get your building permit.
So when is the twenty days actually started?
From the date that I file this with the town clerk.
Should you really when?
Well, you're asking me basically, when I'm gonna get the written decision done? Today is Tuesday, you'll have it by the end of the week.
Excellent.
God willing.
So I should probably cancel the cement truck by tomorrow?
And one caveat to what Ms. Mellow just said, which is, you don't wanna go to the building department or the planning department until you have your new plans, you have your revised plans, okay? Because they're gonna look at the decision that I've written, and they're gonna see, well, this has been revised, and so where are those revised plans? Okay?
Thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you for...
I love your house too, very nice.
He's a builder.
Well, you can tell him he's not living there.
I'll be interested to see the finished product, though, I think it's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah.
I love all the windows.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Bye now. Thank you.
Okay, there's one other issue that I want to just mention to the board, we had a case come in not too long ago, a nice young couple, it was looking to do an addition, a very small addition. Yeah? And then, they apparently, or he apparently went to the building department with a plan different than the one that we conditioned our decision on.
That's too bad.
And that plan was still for the addition, but now a larger one. And so the question was asked of me, what to do about this? And I said, well, that person is now gonna have to come back before us for additional relief, because, you know, we're not in the habit of making decisions based upon plans that have been filed as of, as the time that we rendered our decision, and then the applicant says, oh, no, wait a minute now, I'm on third base with the zoning board, and they're not really gonna mind if we add a hundred, a hundred and fifty, and two hundred and fifty score feet. Well, yes, we do mind, because we're conditioning our decision on the plans of record. So, I passed that information on to the building department, planning department, and then was notified a couple of days later that the applicant had relented and gone back to the original plan.
Wow.
So, I mention this, most especially for Ms. Mellow, who might have to sometime step in for me, if I'm unavailable. And again, to reiterate why getting this last decision correct based upon accurate plans is so important.
Yep.
And what was challenging about that case, as I said, was, you know, these are not the real plans, so to speak, right? He still has work to do on these plans.
Yeah.
So it becomes challenging for us to make decisions based upon plans that, you know, have been revised, on the fly.
Yep.
On the fly. This is why Mr. Poirier is with us, he's, he's a man that thinks on the fly. Huh? And Ms. Mellow too, both of you did a great job tonight picking up on these things. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
No.
At this juncture, I don't think that we have any new cases that we have to schedule for, although that could change tomorrow or the next day, these cases come in unexpectedly, and when they do, you'll hear from me, and we'll get something booked. But for now, I think we're caught up with everything. I do also wanna mention for the record that the, see, the Bynum's decision that we made has been appealed to the Superior Court as expected, and town council will be representing us on that appeal, as it's representing us on the other appeal involving the same applicant. So that, that's been handled, and will be handled going forward by town council, who has possession of my written decision, our written decision on this, and the minutes, so everything that needed to go over is gone over, and I'm confident that town council will be able to, to defend our decision quite, quite easily.
That'll be good.
Okay, so I think that's the update from me on administrative matters, and updates on old cases. Ms. Cullen, would you have anything to say?
I'm good.
And Mr. Barrington, nice to see you so hale and hearty.
Yep.
Smiling?
Doing good.
Good color? Mr. Poirier always has good color. Hair challenged, but good color.
Politely challenged always, yes.
And Ms. Mellow, obviously, is, is a welcome addition on my right side, thank you for being with us tonight and contributing.
I'll try, I'll try.
No, you, you did just fine. So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Carver.